This meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York. Welcome to you all. We will be going into executive session at the end of the first of our public meetings to discuss personnel matters. The Board will reconvene in public session after the executive session. I'd like now to read the following notice. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. Public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Prior hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings. Members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs, at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are always distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws, which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone or BlackBerry? Thank you. As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public session of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees live on cable channel 75. The meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream, providing service worldwide via personal computers and mobile devices. The public sessions of this Board meeting will also be available as a podcast and can be accessed via the CUNY website. I would like to warmly welcome two new trustees who joined the Board recently. Welcome to CUNY trustee Una Clark and trustee Jill O'Donnell Tormey. Trustee Clark was appointed by Mayor de Blasio. She is a former member of the New York City Council and a prominent community leader. She fills the seat recently vacated by Joseph Loda. Trustee O'Donnell Tormey is the CEO and Director of Scientific Affairs of the Cancer Research Institute and was appointed by Governor Cuomo. She fills the vacant Staten Island seat on the Board. Trustee Clark and trustee O'Donnell Tormey will bring invaluable experience and talents to the work of the Board. Trustee Clark, would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to thank you all for such warm welcome and to let you know that I will give it my best. I am not a shrinking violet, and you will find that out very early because I will ask questions. But for tonight's meeting, it will be the first time I'll be very quiet. I will listen so I can absorb. Thank you very much.
We look forward to your input, trustee Clark. Trustee O'Donnell Tormey, would you care to say a few words?
Thank you very much. Again, I echo Una that it's a real pleasure and honor to have been selected for the Board, and I look forward to serving and learning a lot and hopefully contributing to the great pedigree and history of CUNY, and I'm looking forward to learn.
Great. Well, you both bring tremendous credentials to the Board, and we're very glad to have I'm pleased to report that Governor Cuomo has designated trustee Brian Oberfeld to serve as the CUNY trustee on the City University Construction Fund. In addition, Governor Cuomo appointed, and the New York State Senate confirmed, Attorney Michael Walsh of Staten Island to serve on the Construction Fund Board. Congratulations. I would like now to ask trustee Peter Pantaleo to present and move a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number seven, it's a resolution of appreciation for Joseph J. Loda. Whereas the Honorable Joseph J. Loda was appointed by Mayor Michael Bloomberg to the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York in 2001 and reappointed in 2011, and whereas for over 14 years, Mr. Loda has been a dedicated trustee and has played a leading role chairing the Board's Committee on Fiscal Affairs and its Subcommittee on Investment, and whereas the City University of New York and its constituents have greatly benefited from his vast experience, particularly in the field of government, finance, and urban affairs, and whereas he provided invaluable contributions to the university's academic resurgence by helping to secure effective leadership at several CUNY colleges, chairing the Brooklyn College Presidential Search Committee in 2009, and as a member of the Baruch College Search Committee in 2004, and the Queens College Presidential Search Committee in 2001. And whereas during his tenure, his profound wisdom and great experience and deep insight contributed greatly to the deliberations of the Board, including as Chair of the Ad-Hoc Joint Committee on Management and Budgetary Alternatives in 2003, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York express their sincere thanks and deepest appreciation to the Honorable Joseph J. Loda for his energy, devotion, and outstanding service to the City University of New York. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees extends its best wishes for continued success in all his future public and private endeavors.
May we adopt this resolution by acclamation. Thank you very much. Congratulations to trustee Rita Di Martino, who was recently reappointed for a new term as a member of the New York State Commission on National and Community Service. Congratulations to Chancellor Millican, who was recently honored by the One to World Organization at its 25th Annual Fulbright Awards Dinner at the Waldorf Astoria. Chancellor Millican was also recently elected to the very prestigious Council on Foreign Relations. Congratulations, JB. On June 10th, the university held a well-attended reception in Washington, D.C. for the New York Congressional Delegation. I understand this was the first such meeting that we have held. Among the attendees included Senator Charles Schumer, Congress members Yvette Clark, Joe Crowley, Dan Donovan, Eliot Engel, Hakim Jeffries, Gregory Meeks, Grace Ming, Charles Rangel, Jose Serrano, and Lee Zeldin. All the members of the New York delegation were enthusiastic in showing their support for the university and for the CUNY colleges in their districts. We were also honored by the presence of Commissioner John King. I want to especially thank trustees Charles Shorter and Rita Di Martino, who attended this event with me, as well as the college presidents, the chancellor, members of the chancellery, and various college alumni. The Board held its Bronx Borough hearing on Monday, June 22nd. Trustee Carol Robles-Roman chaired the hearing that was also attended by trustees Rita Di Martino and Joseph Awaji, members of the chancellery and presidents of CUNY's Bronx Colleges. A summary of these proceedings has been circulated to the trustees, and transcripts are available in the office of the Secretary. Let me take this opportunity to welcome special guests here with us in the audience, the family of our dear friend, the late and much lamented Dr. Derek Griffith, as well as faculty, staff, and students from the CUNY Preparatory School in the Bronx, where Dr. Griffith served as the founding principal. On tonight's agenda, later in this meeting, there will be a naming recommendation from the Board's Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration proposed for the consideration of the trustees to memorialize Dr. Griffith's tremendous contributions. Our profound condolences to the family and friends of Khalif Browder, 22-years-old. Mr. Browder was a student enrolled in Future Now, a program for previously incarcerated students sponsored by Bronx Community College. We are deeply saddened by his untimely death. Our deepest condolences go also to the family of Hunter College Emeritus Professor Estelle Fuchs, who recently passed away peacefully at her home one day short of her 93rd birthday. Dr. Fuchs was a pioneer in the field of anthropology of education. Her work addressed the application of cultural anthropology to problems of modernization across numerous continents and peoples. Dr. Fuchs will be sorely missed by her CUNY and her Hunter College family. May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Baruch College School of Public Affairs Professor Stan Altman was appointed to the New York State Blue Ribbon Commission on the Arts. Congratulations. Bronx Community College Director of Trio Programs Michelle Danvers Faust became Chair-Elect for the Council for Opportunity in Education Board of Directors. Congratulations to her. Hunter College Professor of Special Education Roseanne Silberman, who coordinates the college's graduate teacher preparation programs in blindness, visual impairment, and severe disabilities, won the Miguel Medal Award by the American Foundation for the Blind for Lifetime Achievement. Also, Professor of Mathematics and Statistics Martin Bindersky was honored by the Geometry and Topology Conference held at Princeton University. The event was sponsored by the CUNY Graduate Center. Congratulations to them. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on trustee Carol Robles-Roman to announce student and alumni honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lots of good news to report. Baruch College student Young Chi Wah Sa won the United States Tennis Association Men's Division Wheelchair Tennis Championship, qualifying for the U.S. Open in the process. Congratulations. CUNY School of Journalism foreign student Maria Sanchez Diaz from Spain was awarded the Foreign Press Association Scholarship and a $10,000 prize. Congratulations. Hunter College sophomore Riley De Young was officially recognized by the town of Lewisboro for her heroic actions in the aftermath of the February 3 Metro North train crash in Valhalla, New York. And Hunter College High School senior Sarah Hammerling won second place in the country in the Intel Science Competition. Congratulations. Very impressive. Now, at your places, you will find a copy of Salute to Scholars: World-Class CUNY Students Win Nationals' Top Academic Awards. I urge all my fellow trustees to read about the extraordinary CUNY students and recent alumni who are featured in the magazine. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. A list of grants and gifts received by the university since our May 4, 2015, meeting is at the table and is in the trustees' meeting books. May I now call on Chancellor James B. Millican to present his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to join the Chair in welcoming our new trustees to the Board. We're delighted to have you and also congratulate the new members of the University Construction Fund. We'll value your wise counsel. This is a full meeting, but I can't let the June meeting pass without saying a few words about the commencement season that just passed. Commencement's one of the best moments of the life of the university, and I know many of you had an opportunity to participate this year. I had the opportunity to participate in four: Hunter, Lehman, Bronx, and Medgar Evers. At this pace, in six years, I will have done each of the commencement ceremonies. Each one had moving speeches by students and terrific keynote speakers and remarkable success stories. It's impossible to attend a commencement ceremony, and especially one at CUNY, without being moved by the many stories of personal drama and inspiration. I know the moments, like the ones I witnessed, were repeated across each of our campuses, so I want to say thank you to the presidents, to their faculty, and their staff who made these moments possible. Our last Board of Trustees meeting took place the very day before we hosted a reception for CUNY's Dream U.S. Scholarship winners. At that reception honoring the over 300 Dream U.S. students and their families, founder of the foundation Don Graham and New York philanthropist Bill Ackman were so moved by our students and the opportunity that they represented that these two individuals pledged an additional $30 million in scholarship for Dreamer students across the country. At this point, CUNY moved from 30 scholars last year to 367 for next year, representing about half of all of the Dreamer scholarship recipients. It's a remarkable achievement, and I want to thank John Mogalescu, who's on a well-deserved vacation, and his staff, but also especially the college presidents who mobilized their teams and made it possible to help so many students apply for these important scholarships. This is also the end of the budget season, and I'm going to report briefly on the resolution of each of the city and the state budgets. I'm going to start with the city and say at the outset how grateful we are to Mayor de Blasio, to City Council Speaker Melissa Marciborito, and the members of the City Council. They've recognized how critical CUNY is to the future of the city and that our students remain the beneficiaries of this consideration. This year's budget is an historic investment by the City of New York, perhaps the best programmatic and systematic investment in CUNY that we have seen. Its effects will be felt for many years to come. The city budget provides $42 million in new funding for a major expansion of the successful accelerated study and associate programs ASAP, which will result in the program enrolling 25,000 students by 2019. It's a major investment in CUNY and will help us scale up this nationally highly regarded program. In addition, the city budget agreement provides $17 million for the City Council Merit Scholarship, which will fund the second year of this program and provide financial support for academically qualified students from New York high schools. The university received $1.5 million for enhanced critical math component of the CUNY Start Initiative. This investment will provide the opportunity to grow a proven program that addresses college readiness for students who leave New York high schools with remediation needs in math. In addition, $1 million was included to provide free Metro cards for Gutman Community College students. As you know, Gutman has many of the elements of the ASAP program, and this addition will add another. The budget also adds importantly, and again, something we'll recognize later this evening, $2.7 million for CUNY Prep, which is an important investment in that necessary program and funds mandatory needs such as pensions and fringe benefits for FY '16 and out years. And with respect to capital needs, the city budget includes $20 million for community college critical maintenance in FY '19, as well as $41 million for infrastructure and programmatic upgrades at LaGuardia Community College. On the state budget side, for the community colleges, the state budget increases the base aid per student by $100, so that will raise $8.3 million in state aid additional support for our community colleges. The university received an additional $6.3 million for key academic and student services programs such as SEEK, the Joseph F. Murphy Institute, CUNY Leeds, and an investment in ASAP. CUNY senior colleges received an additional $12 million to assist colleges in implementing performance improvement plans. We are now working on plans to use this performance funding strategically, consistent with college performance management plans and college and CUNY strategic planning. The budget also included a requirement for CUNY and SUNY to develop plans for every student to have the opportunity for experiential learning. Following up on the Board's resolution at the last meeting, I've appointed a task force chaired by President Jeremy Travis and University Dean Suri Deitch to develop these plans. For capital needs, the state budget provides $103 million for senior college critical maintenance and an additional $55 million for the third installment of CUNY 2020 grant program. And the legislature has proposed a five-year capital plan to formally advance facilities' needs for CUNY and SUNY. If signed by the governor, this could provide the framework for significant capital planning for the future. While not a budget item, the state also adopted a new sexual assault law championed by the governor and supported by CUNY. The General Counsel's Office, particularly Jane Sovereign, worked for a long time to develop a thoughtful, comprehensive plan that was adopted by this Board last December. The new law reflects many of the changes implemented under the Board's plan, and we will make sure our policies are reconciled with any new requirements. We're deeply grateful to the governor, his staff, and to both houses of the legislature for their careful deliberations and high regard for CUNY. With regard to one of our highest priorities, the collective bargaining for an agreement for our faculty and staff, we continue to work with state and city officials to achieve a fair and equitable settlement, and I will keep this Board informed of our progress. I've mentioned previously to the Board that I believe early childhood education and development needs to be a priority if we're to be effective in raising standards for all our students and preparing them to be successful in college. I've named a CUNY-wide task force chaired by Early Education Professional Development Institute Director Sherry Cleary and Brooklyn College Education Dean April Bedford to develop plans for a deeper CUNY role in education and community capacity building. The Foundation for Early Childhood is supporting our work. I want to congratulate President Jeremy Travis, who has won not one, but two awards since our last meeting, the 2015 Ellis Island Medal of Honor and the Amelia Betanzos Distinguished Service Award for Service to New York City. Well done, President Travis. I also want to note that Senior Vice Chancellor and Secretary of the Board Jay Hirschensohn was honored by the Chinatown Local Development Corporation. He also received the New York Board of Rabbis 2015 Humanitarian Award on June 2 and the Visionary Leader Award from the Jewish Community Relations Council on June 16. We will keep you posted on the regular event of honors for Jay Hirschensohn. I want to add one additional note. Last week was a remarkable time in the history of our country, one element of which was a landmark decision by the U.S. Supreme Court recognizing a constitutional right to marriage for all Americans. This was a cause for celebration yesterday in New York's Pride Parade, where CUNY was well-represented by students, faculty, and staff on our very popular float. In its decision, the court cited an earlier decision, Loving v. Virginia, that struck down state laws prohibiting interracial marriage in 1967. That very significant, presidential decision was authored by then Chief Justice Earl Warren. I was reminded this weekend that one amongst us played a key role in that case, Chief Justice Warren's law clerk, a very young Benno Schmidt. And I'm going to stop there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chancellor. Are there comments or questions for the Chancellor on his university report? I think, Mr. Chancellor, you and your colleagues, Jay, John Katauski, and many others deserve a lot of credit for what the city did, the best city budget in the history of the university. And I know that took a great deal of work, Jay, on your part, and your staff, and JB, and many of the college presidents and others. That's a very significant thing. And if we're able to hold to what the legislature did with respect to, among other things, the five-year capital budget, the maintenance of effort, renewal of the CUNY tuition five-year plan, I mean, if that holds, it will have turned out to be a great year for us. So we will hope that Albany develops well for us in the weeks ahead. Any further comment or discussion for the Chancellor? All right, we'll turn now to the policy items that require a vote. May I first move the adoption of the Chancellor's university report for June 29, 2015? You'll find a copy of this report on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions on the report? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That carries. I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular Board meeting of May 4, 2015. You'll find a copy of the draft minutes in your meeting books. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions about the minutes or suggested revisions? Are there none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The minutes are adopted. We'll turn now to reports from our committees. We'll start with the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. I'd like to call on Committee Vice Chair Peter Pantaleo to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a report on the June 1, 2015, joint meeting of the Committee on Fiscal Affairs and the Subcommittee on Audit. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs and the Subcommittee on Audit met in a joint session on June 1, 2015. Following the approval of the minutes of the Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting of April 6, 2015, the committee approved the following resolutions. Mr. Chairman, I would like to present calendar items 3A, 3B, and 3C together, since they are resolutions pertaining to academic excellence fees at Queens College and John J. College of Criminal Justice, and music lessons fees at Brooklyn College. These fees will allow the colleges to provide the level of support students seek in a rigorous plan of study, which will bolster the students' academic achievements and further the accomplishment of their career goals and strengthen the quality of instruction. Programs will remain very affordable in comparison to other programs in the metropolitan area. The resolutions request that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorize the following fees. Item 3A, Academic Excellence Fees at Queens College. Aaron Copland School of Music, for the M-M-M-A-M-S degrees, Advanced Certificate Programs in Music Performance and Music Education. $150 per semester for students enrolled in 1-5 credits, $300 per semester for students enrolled in six or more credits. In the Department of Economics, for the Masters of Science in Risk Management, $500 per student per academic semester assessed in the fall and spring semesters. The Department of Linguistics and Communication Disorders, Master of Arts in Applied Linguistics, Master of Science in Education, that's T-S-O-L, Master of Post— I'm sorry—Post-Masters Advanced Certificate in T-E-S-O-L, Advanced Certificates in English Language Teaching, Post-Masters Program in TESOL, and Bilingual Education, Master of Arts in Speech-Language Pathology, MA in Speech-Language Pathology, $500 per semester for full-time and part-time students. All other programs, $25 per credit, and that's for LCD-labeled classes only, for full and part-time students. In the Department of Psychology, the Advanced Certificate in Applied Behavioral Analysis, $150 per semester for full and part-time students. $150 per semester for full and part-time students. The Department of Sociology, in the Master of Arts in Data Analytics and Applied Social Research Masters Program, full and part-time students, a fee of $50 per graduate credit hour, up to a maximum of $1,500 per student. Item 3B, Academic Excellence Fees at John J. College of Criminal Justice. These are for the MA Program in Forensic Psychology, the MA Program in Forensic Mental Health Counseling, the Postgraduate Certificate Program in Forensic Psychology, and the MA-JD Dual Degree Program with New York Law School. A semester increase of $125 for every three credits, for a maximum of $500 for a full-time course load of 12 credits. Item 3C, Private Lesson Fees in Music Performance at Brooklyn College. MM Private Lessons in Music Performance, Advanced Certificate in Music Performance Private Lessons, Advanced Diploma in Music Performance Private Lessons, and $250 fee added for each registration. Mr. Chairman, please note that the calendar items 3A and 3B have been revised from the versions that were approved by the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. The effective dates for all associated academic excellence fees will be spring 2016 semester and not fall 2015, as approved by the committee. This change has been requested by both Queens College and John J. College in order to provide more advanced notice and planning to the affected students. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar items 3A, 3B, and 3C.
I'll second those items. Are there questions for the committee? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those items carry.
Calendar item 3D is a resolution requesting that the City University of New York adopt a revised schedule of material fees for students in the full-time and part-time Juris Doctor Programs at the CUNY School of Law, effective with the fall 2015 semester. The CUNY School of Law currently charges all students a materials fee that includes the cost of textbooks, which are purchased and distributed by the school. Effective fall 2015, the school will be eliminating its bookstore and partnering with an online textbook retailer, allowing students the freedom to select and purchase textbooks on their own, as the school will no longer require material fee revenue to support textbook distribution. The proposed fee schedule reflects the remaining expenses currently covered by the materials fee, including the cost of one-time expenses such as printing diplomas and recurring expenses such as student copy card allocation each semester. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3D.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee on 3D? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That's adopted.
Calendar item 3E is a resolution requesting the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorize the General Counsel to execute on behalf of the university for the purchase and delivery—I'm sorry—execute a contract on behalf of the university for the purchase and delivery of computer-based remedial tests. Such services shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $1,215,000. CUNY requires these tests to assess the college readiness of post-high school-level students to determine a student's level of proficiency in reading, writing, and mathematics. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3E.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee on 3E? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? 3E carries.
Calendar item 3F is a resolution requesting the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of LaGuardia Community College to purchase and replace existing variable air volume (VAV) devices part of the building's HVAC system. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $1 million. The new VAV boxes will lead to an estimated $122,662 annual cost saving arising from electricity conserved and significant reduction in wear and tear of equipment and need for repair and replacement. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3F.
Second that. Are there questions for the committee? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to present calendar items 3G and 3H together. Calendar item 3G is a resolution requesting that the Executive Committee of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York hereby accept a gift of approximately $1.5 million from the estate of Joseph M. Shore for the benefit of students at Macaulay Honors College whose home campus is Queens College or City College. Dr. Joseph Shore was a City College alumnus, was a biochemist, and a former executive of Forest Laboratories. His family connections to the university run deep. He is the late husband of Dr. Laura Shore, the founding dean of Macaulay Honors College and former provost of Hunter College. In addition, Dr. Shore's first wife, Sandra Shore, was an alumna and honored faculty member of Queens College. Commemorating the dedication and commitment of the Shore family to CUNY, this gift will support the Opportunities Fund for Macaulay Honors College students on the campuses of Queens College and City College. Calendar item 3H is a resolution requesting the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York hereby accept a gift of $1 million from the Anthony E. Meyer Family Foundation in support of the Opportunities Funds at Macaulay Honors College. In recognition of this generous gift, the college will establish the Meyer Scholars Fund. Anthony Meyer is an entrepreneur, private investor, and philanthropist. He is president of Ocean Road Advisors and chairman of Meter &amp; Company LLC. He currently serves as the vice chairman of the Macaulay Honors College Foundation Board and leads its development committee. He has also been named as Entrepreneur in Residence. Commemorating the dedication and commitment of Mr. Meyer and his family to CUNY, this gift will support the co-curricular activities provided through the Opportunities Fund for Macaulay Honors College students. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of items 3G and 3H.
Second those. Are there questions for the committee on either of these items? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those items carry.
Following the approval of these action items, Vice Chancellor Sapienza gave a presentation on the fiscal year 2016 city executive budget. With no other items on the agenda for the Fiscal Affairs Committee, the audit subcommittee was convened. With the approval of the minutes of the meeting of February 2, 2015, the university's external audit firm, KPMG, gave a presentation on the proposed audit scope for fiscal year 2015. The subcommittee then proceeded to pass a resolution approving the audit scope as presented by KPMG and authorizing the Vice Chancellor for Budget and Finance to sign the engagement letter for the audit of the CUNY financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2015. With no more items on the agenda for the Subcommittee on Audit, the meeting was then adjourned, and if we needed another reason to miss Trustee Loda, it's the reading of this incredibly long [laughter] report on his behalf. That's all for my report.
Thank you very much, Trustee Pantaleo. You did very well. We'll turn now to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. I'd like to call on Trustee Charles Shorter.
It only gets worse. On behalf of Chairman Wellington Chen, the following items were approved at the committee meeting June 6 by the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. Item number one, for the Borough of Manhattan Community College, approval of an Associate of Arts in History and an Associate of Science in Gerontology. The proposed action will create two standalone programs in areas that had previously been part of a broad liberal arts program. Since all courses already being offered, this does not entail new costs. The initiative will allow the college to improve advertisement and student tracking, offering students a variety of curricular options to prepare to transfer into the baccalaureate program. Item number two, the City College Masters of Science in Physician Assistant Studies. City College's existing BS in Physician Assistance Program is nationally accredited. The accreditation is requiring that all program transitions to the graduate level, which over 90% of existing programs have already done. Courses from the existing undergraduate program at City College have been revised, and new courses have been added to warrant a higher credential. City College will now be able to recruit from a wider geographic range to reset its enrollment and to meet its enrollment targets for the program. Calendar item number 4C, or number three, City College of Technology, a Bachelor of Science in Applied Chemistry. The proposed Bachelor of Science, BS in Applied Chemistry, will create a direct path to employment in a broad range of laboratory settings in each area of pharmaceutical, personal care, biochemistry, regulatory affairs, materials, and environmental monitoring and remediation. The BS in Applied Chemistry will have the added benefit of attracting and recruiting talented students, pursuing an Associate of Science in City Tech. Item number four, Hunter College, Bachelor of Arts in Early Childhood Education. The Hunter College School of Education proposes an undergraduate program in early childhood education in response to Mayor de Blasio's initiative to expand full-day pre-kindergarten programs in neighborhoods throughout the city. With this initiative comes the need for highly qualified educators and early-care professionals that this program will provide and will need. Item number five, John J. College, establishment of the Department of Interdisciplinary Studies. The new department will provide the necessary organizational structure to facilitate interdisciplinary scholarship and teaching and to provide a home for various interdisciplinary programs and initiatives, as well as to their faculty members. Item number six, Medgar Evers College, establishment of two new departments and the closing of one. Medgar Evers is proposing to close its existing Department of Physical, Environmental, and Computer Sciences and to create two separate new departments. One, the Department of Chemistry and Environmental Science, and two, the Department of Physics and Computer Science. The establishment of two distinct departments will foster new academic initiatives and facilitate accreditation activities, which will be more disciplined base as well as improve chances of receiving federal grant funds. Item number six, Brooklyn College, closing of the SEEK Department to establish the SEEK program. Brooklyn College has determined that to promote student success, SEEK students will be better served by a program that provides academic support services throughout the calendar year. A program status is more appropriate and will make providing current activities more feasible. The new program will report to the Office of the Associate Provost for Academic Programs. Items one through six were approved by the committee, and I recommend their approval by the board.
I'll second those. Are there questions for the committee on any of these academic program changes? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those items carry. Anything further to report?
Sure.
No, that was all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on Trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will now present for the board's approval the items that the Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration considered at its meeting on June 1. Our agenda consisted of policy items, naming opportunities, and the appointments of several new distinguished professors. In addition, there is an added item, number 5A, which I will present first. Copies have been provided to board members. Added item 5A amends the university's policy on the acceptable use of computer resources to permit certain CUNY employees to retain their CUNY email addresses following retirement, so that they can continue to maintain a connection with the university, their students and colleagues, and engage in academic work. This privilege will be extended to retiring teacher, faculty, and librarians and other CUNY employees approved by the college president, the chancellor, or his designee. CUNY email addresses will not be available to those employees who resign or are terminated for a cause. Persons who are extended this privilege will be provided with a copy of the CUNY policy on acceptable use of computer resources to govern their ongoing use of their CUNY email addresses, and will be required to sign a written agreement that they do not hold themselves out as active CUNY employees. A copy of the updated policy appears in the revised calendar on the table. Mr. Chair, Trustee Martel would just like to add a few words to this before we vote.
First of all, I'd like to thank Vice Chancellor Schaefer. For expediting this motion so it can be voted on today. I especially want to thank CIO Brian Cohen for the flexibility and understanding he demonstrated regarding faculty emails. The original approach, partially implemented, was to terminate faculty emails upon retirement. In meetings with Brian Cohen, I explained that cutting off emails would effectively cut the faculty member off from colleagues and former students and impede the ability to remain connected to the academy. After several discussions, the details of which there's no reason to go into, Brian kindly changed the approach, and as you see before you, will allow faculty members to keep their emails upon retirement. The faculty deeply appreciate this change, and I would be remiss if I did not publicly acknowledge CIO Cohen's contribution to faculty well-being. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor Martel. I'll second the motion. Are there questions for the committee on this amendment to the computer resources policy? Not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Thank you. Item 5B amends the university's Optional Retirement Plan, or ORP, and adopts a restated ORP plan document effective retroactively to September 1, 2014. The amendments reflect required changes to the ORP emanating from revisions to the Internal Revenue Code and are being adopted retroactively so that they may be deemed effective as of the dates required by the Internal Revenue Code. The retroactive amendments are being adopted pursuant to a submission made by CUNY under the IRS Employee Plan Compliance Resolution System, which was approved by the IRS on April 15, 2015. On that date, the IRS also approved the restated Optional Retirement Plan document, which incorporates the retroactive amendments and updates the document to reflect changes to the education law and the rules that govern administration of the ORP. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has carefully reviewed this matter and recommends its approval. Mr. Chair, I present item 5B for the board's consideration.
Second that. Are there questions for the committee on this item? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That item carries.
Mr. Chair, before I continue with our action items, I'd like to briefly report on the work of the CUNY Defined Contribution Investment Oversight Task Force, whose work relates to the matter just approved. At our meeting on June 1, the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration received a report from Kamic Retirement, Inc., the consultant that has been retained to examine the vast array of investment opportunities that CUNY offers its employees and the fellow employees. the vast array of investment opportunities that CUNY offers its employees and the fees associated with them. Kamic's preliminary recommendations included seeking opportunities to reduce the fees that some participants are paying and leveling the playing field in that regard. They also are recommending consolidating our multiple vendors down to one or two and reducing CUNY's investment offerings to a more manageable array of best-in-class funds. These are all considered best practices in the marketplace right now. The task force will continue to work with Kamic over the summer to finalize our recommendations to improve the retirement readiness of CUNY employees, and I look forward to sharing those with you in the fall. I will now continue with our calendar. Item 5C amends the Charter of York College to respond to recommendation from college's last mental states review, facilitate achievement of quorum for an important committee, and incorporate best practices from other college governance plans. The proposed amendments include permitting the use of alternates for the Committee on Curriculum in order to achieve quorum pursuant to open meetings law. In addition, two new committees on governance and resources will be established, and the Committee on Admissions will be abolished as its primary functions are managed by the university processing admissions center. That committee's role in recommending policy will be incorporated into the functions of the Committee on Academic Policy and Standards. Mr. Chair, I present item 5C for the Board's consideration.
Second that item. Are there questions for the committee on this item? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions that item carries.
Calendar 5D, E, F, and G are naming opportunities at several campuses, which I will present together. I am very pleased to report that these naming reflect monetary gifts to the university in excess of sixteen million dollars. They are as follows: the Mary Koppelmann School of Business at Brooklyn College, the Herbert and Ruth Askeny Honors Suite at the City College of New York, the Con Edison Trading Room in the College of Staten Island School of Business, and the Pershing Rifles Company E8 Study Room at Bronx Community College. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed these matters and is pleased to recommend their approval. Mr. Chair, I present items 5D through 5G.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee on these naming items? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions those items carry.
I am now pleased to present item 5H, which designates three new distinguished professors. The committee has reviewed each of these outstanding appointments and heartily recommends their approval. They are Paul R. Krugman, Distinguished Professor of Economics at the Graduate Center, Ruth M. Milkman, Distinguished Professor of Sociology at the Graduate Center, and Henry Pontell, Distinguished Professor of Sociology at John J. College of Criminal Justice. Mr. Chair, I am pleased to present these appointments for the Board's consideration.
I'll second that motion. Are there any questions before we vote? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions those carry.
Mr. Chairman, I am pleased that Professor Pontell is with us this afternoon, and I will ask President Jeremy Travis to introduce him.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Trustees. I am delighted to introduce now Distinguished Professor of Sociology Henry Pontell to this body. Distinguished Professor Pontell, who recently joined John J. College after thirty-five years at the University of California at Irvine, is an internationally recognized scholar of sociology and criminology, whose path-breaking scholarship on topics such as white collar and corporate crime, medical fraud, jail litigation overcrowding, has earned him the highest accolades of his profession and the admiration and respect of scholars who are themselves renowned in the field. His external letters in support of his candidacy for distinguished professor were studded with superlatives. He was described as the preeminent, foremost, leading, most distinguished, world's best scholar of white collar crime, as well as one of the great criminologists of his generation. Many of his nine books and hundreds of articles are classics, major works that are widely cited and of great utility to students and other scholars. In addition to his scholarly achievements, while at UC Irvine, he served in a number of administrative roles, including creating and directing the Master of Advanced Study Program, the first online degree program at the University of California, which was ranked number one in the online criminal justice graduate programs in the country by U.S. News and World Report. He's worked with numerous federal agencies, including the FBI, the U.S. Secret Service, and has provided written and verbal testimony on financial institution fraud before the United States Congress and national commissions. He is past Vice President of the American Society of Criminology, past President of the Western Society of Criminology, and a Fellow of both organizations. He currently serves as President of the White Collar Crime Research Consortium of the National White Collar Crime Center. Among other awards and honors, Professor Pontell has received the Donald R. Creasy Award from the Association for Certified Fraud Examiners, the Gilgeys Lifetime Achievement Award from the National White Collar Crime Center, and the Albert Rees Jr. Distinguished Scholarship Award from the American Sociological Association. We're very lucky to have Henry Pontell join our university and join the faculty at John J., where he is now the Chair of our sociology department and in every way deserving of the honor you have bestowed upon him, and I'm proud to present him to you today to say a few word of thanks. Professor Pontell.
Thank you, President Travis. Is this on? Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you very much for this great honor. I'll make my comments very brief, as I know you have much work to do and I have another plane to catch this evening. I'm so greatly honored by this most prestigious appointment and want to express my sincere thanks to all those at John J. College and CUNY for their efforts and trust in recommending it, including Chancellor Millican, President Travis, Provost Bowers, Faculty Director Kevin Nesbit, and all my colleagues. Coming back to New York after being at the University of California for my entire professional career, this is by far the best homecoming one could ever imagine. As a native New Yorker and a product of the public school system, PS-89, and Newtown High School in Elmhurst, Queens, and Stony Brook University, I identify closely with students in the city and fully appreciate their take on reality, their hardships, and their dreams. Like most of them, I came from a working-class background. Having access to a quality and affordable education was one of the most important things in my life, and I will never forget that, and I will continue to give back to my students in providing opportunities for their success as much as I possibly can. Relatedly, one rarely, if ever, achieves such great things alone. I want to thank all my teachers, students, and colleagues, past and present, but especially Mrs. Oxman and Mr. Fisher, who had early confidence in me as a student, Professors David Phillips, Michael Schwartz, Louis Cozer, and Jean Weinstein, who were there for me as an undergraduate, Rose Cozer, Forrest Dill, Sheldon Messenger, and Hanon Selden, among others, who mentored me in graduate school, and Gilgeys, Arnie Binder, Paul Gessello, Stephen Rosoff, and many others, who were there as great colleagues, students, and mentors at UC Irvine. Finally, I thank my wife, family, and friends, and especially my late parents Barbara and Bernard Pontell for instilling in me the importance of education and for sacrificing so much to ensure that I received the best one possible. I share this great honor in their memory. Thank you very much again.
We also have with us this afternoon Dr. Ruth Milkman, and Dr. Chase Robinson will now introduce her.
Thank you very much. It's a great pleasure to say a few words about Professor Ruth Milkman. Professor Milkman is broadly recognized as one of the foremost labor sociologists in the United States today. She has made important contributions to the fields of gender studies, economic sociology, social movements, and immigration. A prolific writer and researcher, Professor Milkman's publications include four highly acclaimed books and numerous articles, book chapters, and book reviews. She's also recipient of many honors, awards, and fellowships, the last from such prestigious foundations as the Ford, Russell Sage, Sloan, and Annie E. Casey. Professor Milkman taught sociology for more than twenty years at UCLA, having begun her teaching career at Queens College in 1981, where she also joined the Graduate Center. At UCLA, she directed the Institute for Research on Labor and Employment from 2001 to 2008. Since joining the Graduate Center in 2010, or perhaps I should say, rejoining CUNY, Ruth has served with much distinction, not only at the Graduate Center, but also as the academic director of the Joseph S. Murphy Institute for Worker Education and Labor Studies. In recognition of her outstanding reputation in the field, her longstanding service, Professor Milkman was recently elected President of the American Sociological Association. Ruth has enriched the intellectual life of the PhD program in sociology at the Graduate Center and the City University of New York. I am very pleased to see her achievements honored today.
Thanks very much, Chase. I want to thank you and all my colleagues at the Graduate Center, as well as all of you in this room, for this great honor. It's really a privilege to be part of the CUNY faculty once again. CUNY has always been an important part of my life. During the Great Depression, both of my parents graduated from Brooklyn College. My mother was actually on the staff there for a few years after she graduated. One of my aunts and several other relatives went to Hunter College in those years as well, so I knew about, even though I didn't grow up in New York, I knew about CUNY all my life. And as Chase mentioned, my first job when I completed graduate school was at Queens College, where I taught from 1981 to 88. I was then, as he mentioned, recruited to the UCLA faculty, where I spent twenty-one years, and I was completely delighted to return to my current job at the Graduate Center just over five years ago. I have never looked back. I've actually spent my entire career teaching in public universities, and I deeply believe in their mission. My own parents, the children of immigrants, probably would not have been able to attend college in the 1930s if not for the free tuition. Sadly, the cost of college is far greater today, but CUNY and other public universities are still vehicles of social mobility for millions of young Americans. I'm proud to have a small part in fulfilling that mission, and I hope that with your help we can preserve it for future generations, in spite of the escalating attacks on public universities and on the public sector more generally. Thank you again for this great honor.
Finally, Mr. Chair, I am honored to present item 5I, the naming of the CUNY Preparatory School in memory of Dr. Derek Griffith. This resolution was recommended by Chancellor Millican and unanimously approved by the Board's Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. On a personal note, I was first introduced to Derek by Dean John Mogulusko, and I became completely enamored of his work and his dedication. Derek inspired my work at the college, and he will be sorely missed. I understand that members of Derek's or Dr. Griffith's family are here with us today in the auditorium, and I would like to acknowledge their presence and ask them to stand. We have with us his son, Darius Griffith, and family members Carla Griffith, Dolores Griffith, and Trina Johnson. Now, and I would like, it is my honor to read the resolution in its entirety. Resolved that the CUNY Preparatory School in the Bronx be renamed the Dr. Derek Griffith CUNY Preparatory School. Derek Griffith committed his life to education, using it to overcome obstacles and encouraging those he mentored to do the same. He died tragically in the Amtrak accident on May 12th, 2015, outside of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Dr. Griffith was a brilliant and passionate educator, scholar, and an extraordinary human being who saw potential in others when it was hard for them to see it in themselves. He was a tireless force in the world of education. Starting out as a social studies teacher in Rochester, New York, he subsequently taught as an adjunct instructor at Hunter College. In 2003, the City University of New York hired him to serve as the founding principal and director of CUNY Prep, a school he created that has enabled thousands of out-of-school youth to earn high school equivalency diplomas and enter college. In doing so, Dr. Griffith altered the educational landscape for out-of-school youth in New York City. Because of Dr. Griffith's early efforts to build the school, CUNY Prep has become a recognized model for re-engaging young people with an education that provides a rigorous and supportive pathway into college, especially for those traditionally considered incapable of achieving such goals. After leaving CUNY Prep in 2010, Dr. Griffith served as Associate Provost at Medgar Evers College, and most recently as Dean of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management. He defended his dissertation and earned his Doctorate of Philosophy in Urban Education at CUNY's Graduate Center just one month before his tragic death, and received his degree on May 27th, 2015. Dr. Griffith transformed thousands of lives of young New Yorkers who were uplifted by his encouragement as they found the resolve to pursue education and build personal beliefs in their own ability to persevere. He was a true visionary, whose compassion and intelligence were paralleled only by his sense of humor and love for his students, colleagues, friends, and family. For the foregoing reasons, the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the naming of the Dr. Derek Griffith CUNY Preparatory School. Mr. Chair, I am honored to present items 5C for the Board's consideration.
Let's adopt by acclamation.
Mr. Chair, I am honored that this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Beal. Trustee Foster.
I'd just like to add, for those of you who may not have known Derek or Dr. Griffith, his enthusiasm, his energy, and his passion for student access and for student success was infectious, and it's exactly the representation of what we're about here at CUNY. It was an honor for me to know him. I met him during my first year as trustee, maybe over eight years ago, and I considered Derek a friend and a colleague who was authentic about his passion for students, and I could not be in more agreement of this special tribute. I have spoken, I've had the honor of speaking at the CUNY Prep graduation almost every year of my trusteeship, and boy, do I look forward to attending the commencement ceremony this year at the Dr. Derek Griffith CUNY Prep School next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Trustee Beal. We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. I'd like to call on Trustee Carol Robles-Ramon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs has six items for the Board's approval. The committee met on June 1 and approved calendar items 6A, B, C, D, E, and F. The first calendar item, 6A, approval of the City University of New York amendments to the bylaws of the Board of Trustees. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves Article 16, student activity fees and auxiliary enterprises of the bylaws. An explanation for the amendment is included in the calendar. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item 6A. Mr. Chairman, I ask for a vote on this calendar item.
I'll second the motion. Are there questions for the committee on the item? Not all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, that item is adopted.
Thank you. Second item is calendar item 6B, approval of the residence hall disciplinary procedures. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York adopts the City University of New York Residence Hall disciplinary procedures as amended effective July 1, 2015. An explanation for the amended procedures is included in the calendar. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item 6B, and I ask for a vote on this calendar item.
I'll second the item. Are there questions for the committee? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, that item carries.
Thank you. Our third item is calendar item 6C, approval of the Queensborough Community College student activity fee increase. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the Queensborough Community College student activity fee. An explanation for the recommended fee increase is included in the calendar. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item 6C. Mr. Chairman, I ask for a vote on this calendar item.
I'll second. Are there questions for the committee on this item? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, that item is adopted.
Thank you. The fourth item, calendar item 6D, approval of the Brooklyn College student activity fee increase, College of Liberal Arts and Sciences Day Session. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the Brooklyn College student activity fee increase for College of Liberal Arts and Sciences Day Session. An explanation for the fee increase is included in the calendar. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item 6D. I ask for a vote on this calendar item.
Thank you. I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee on this item? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that item is adopted.
Thank you. The next calendar item, 6E, approval for the CUNY School of Law establishment of a part-time student activity fee. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the CUNY School of Law establishment of a part-time student activity fee. An explanation for the establishment of the part-time fee is included in the calendar. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item 6E. Mr. Chairman, I ask for a vote on this calendar item.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee on this item? Not all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, that item carries.
Thank you. And our sixth calendar item, 6F, approval of the College of Staten Island student activity fee increase. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the College of Staten Island student activity fee. An explanation for the recommended fee increase is included in the calendar. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item 6F. Mr. Chairman, I ask for a vote on this calendar item.
I'll second the item. Are there questions for the committee? Not all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, that item carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. The Chancellor has asked for an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we leave the business— this part of the business section of the agenda, I want to make an additional comment on the city and state budget that I reported on. I have a pretty good idea why we do well when we do, and it's because of our students, and it's not only because public officials know that the investment they make in CUNY redounds the benefit of our students, it's also because of the very effective advocacy by our students, who are always the best advocates for CUNY's programs. And I certainly know that's the case this year with the city council and the mayor's sizable investment in the second year of the Merit Scholars Program. So, to— on behalf of all the students at CUNY who were so effective, I want to recognize the $17 million man, Joseph Awaji, and thank you for the efforts of our students.
Thank you. We'll now go into executive session, and we will reconvene in a public meeting following the executive session. Thank you. I'd like to call this public session of the Board to order. We have some appointments to consider. I'd like to call first on Vice Chair Phil Berry to present a resolution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is concerning the Ostos Community College Appointment of President. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Dr. David Gomez as the president of Ostos, Eugenio de Maria de Ostos Community College, effective July 1 this year, at a compensation to be recommended by the Chancellor to the Board, subject to financial availability. And our explanation for it in a search that I chaired, we concluded an extensive national search, and we recommended four finalists to the Chancellor, and the Chancellor is recommending Dr. David Gomez as president. Dr. Gomez is presently the interim president of Ostos, Eugenio de Maria de Ostos Community College. Previously, he has been a senior administrator at Kingsborough Community College for more than 20 years, where he served as interim vice president for academic affairs and provost, vice president for academic administration, program planning and development, dean of instructional services and student support, and dean of instructional services. Prior to his service at Kingsborough, Dr. Gomez spent more than a decade at Ostos, where he has been the dean of the college, interim dean of academic affairs, associate dean of the college, and special assistant to the president of the planning and administration, planning and management. He earned his BA degree in English Literature from SUNY Albany, and an MA in Higher Education Administration, and an EDD in Higher and Adult Education from Teachers College at Columbia University. I submit this for recommendation.
I'll second the resolution. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Congratulations, Dr. Griffin.
I think— I think Dr. Matos Rodriguez was going to voice an objection. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, I just want to acknowledge that for nearly half a century, Ostos has played a critical role in the South Bronx, in its livelihood, in its future, and in its dreams. Community College Number Eight has grown to be a prominent institution nationally, and it's due to the dedication of its faculty, its students, and of its leaders, including the gentleman who sits to my left. And that needs to be acknowledged, and I think he deserves a round of applause for bringing the institution to order. As I said to this body before, I think this is an awesome responsibility and one that I take very seriously. I am going to do my best, and I commit to you, to try to keep this institution on the trajectory it's currently on, and to serve this university, and I can now say my institution to the best of my ability. Thank you.
I'd like to call on Trustee Valerie Beal to present a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bronx Community College Appointment of President. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Dr. Thomas Sekunegbe as the president of Bronx Community College, effective August 17, 2015, at a compensation to be recommended by the Chancellor of the Board, subject to financial ability. Explanation: The Search Committee, which I chaired, at the conclusion of an extensive national search, recommended three finalists for the presidency of Bronx Community College. The Chancellor is recommending Dr. Thomas Sekunegbe as president. Dr. Sekunegbe is currently the president of Cumberland County College, where he has served in that position since 2009. Previously, he was vice president of Academic Affairs and Student Services at Cumberland County College, associate dean of Academic Affairs at Sussex County Community College, and director of interdisciplinary studies program at Coastal Carolina University. Dr. Sekunegbe holds a BS with honors in Biology from the University of Nigeria, and an MS in Science Education, and an EDS in Curriculum and Instruction, and a PhD in Curriculum and Instruction from Indiana State University. I present Dr. Sekunegbe.
I'll second the resolution. Are there comments or questions? Oh, Chancellor Milliken.
All right. So, first I have to say that Dr. Gomez, no reflection on you—I had some comments on you, but the chair passed me over. You want— let me know when it's your birthday, and I'll send them to you in a card. I want to thank Trustee Beal and her colleagues, who did an outstanding job. They considered many qualified candidates and forwarded three outstanding sitting presidents as finalists for the Bronx Presidency. Since that time, I have come to know Thomas Sekunegbe and his accomplishments. He's a seasoned administrator who has led a highly regarded institution. He has a skill and experience—we saw it—as well as the personal characteristics and values that will serve him very well. He comes to the Bronx Community College with a passion for that institution and its mission, and I could not be more pleased with this nomination.
I'll second the motion. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am truly honored and humbled for the appointment as the president of Bronx County— for Bronx Community College. I want to thank the Board, the CUNY Board, the Chair of the Search Committee, for the confidence in me. To the Chancellor, thank you very much for recommending me, and I'm looking forward to reeling up my sleeves, to work with you, the faculty, staff, students, and alumni of the college, to make Bronx Community College the best community college in the system. And I have my wife at the back of the room. I just want to say thank you to you. This is our last move. I know she's—if you read my resume, I've moved all over the places, and she's always been there. I want to say thank you very much for your support. David, I want to say congratulations. I'm coming into your neighborhood.
I'd like to now call on Trustee Rita Di Martino to present a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas Dr. Eduardo Martí was designated interim president of Bronx Community College by Chancellor James B. Milliken in October 2014, with the unanimous approval of the Board of Trustees, and whereas Dr. Martí served as interim president with exemplary distinction and purpose, and whereas Dr. Martí has been a community college president for more than 25 years, his prior service has included presidencies of SUNY, Tompkins, Cortlandt, and Hornig Community College. And whereas Dr. Martí joined the City University of New York in July 2000 as president of Queensborough Community College, where he served with the highest distinction, overseen advances in student enrollment, curricular innovation, faculty research, government relations, campus facilities, and fundraising. And whereas Dr. Martí last served CUNY in the role of the first vice chancellor for community colleges from June 2010 until June 2012. And whereas Dr. Martí was appointed by Mayor Michael Bloomberg to the Department of Education's Panel for Educational Policy in 2011, and appointed by Governor Eliot Spitzer to the New York State Commission on Higher Education in 2007, chairing its Workforce and Economic Development Committee. And whereas Dr. Martí conceived and organized the first national coloquium on community colleges in September 2011, reimagining community colleges, which was attended by more than 50 presidents from 26 states, as well as community college faculty and researchers. And whereas Dr. Martí, who left Cuba in 1960 and was the first in his family to achieve a college degree, has been an eloquent and steadfast supporter of CUNY's proud tradition of welcoming and serving immigrants and the children of immigrants. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Dr. Eduardo Martí for once again serving the university with his exemplary dedication and distinguished leadership. Thank you.
I'll second the motion. Are there any comments? All in favor, let's adopt by acclamation. Eduardo, my old friend.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Trustees, I think the hour is late, and the occasion is momentous, and all I can say is that it has been an honor to serve you. Thank you.
I'd like to call on Trustee Frida Foster to present a resolution.
Thank you. This is in the matter of the appointment of vice chancellor for facilities planning, construction, and management. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Judith E. Bertram as the vice chancellor for facilities planning, construction, and management, effective July 1, 2015, at a compensation to be recommended by the Chancellor to the Board, subject to financial ability. The Search Committee, chaired by Baruch College President Mitchell Wallerstein, at the conclusion of an extensive national search, recommended four finalists for the position of vice chancellor for facilities planning, construction, and management. The Chancellor is recommending Judith E. Bertram as— The Chancellor is recommending Judith E. Bertram as Vice Chancellor for this position. She currently serves as the interim. Previously, Ms. Bertram was Deputy to the Vice Chancellor for Facilities Planning, Construction, and Management. Prior to joining the City University, Ms. Bertram was the first Deputy Commissioner of the New York City Department of Transportation, and Deputy Commissioner, Division of Municipal Supply Services, New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services. Ms. Bertram has been an active, has been active as a community service leader in New York City, and is currently the Vice Chairperson of the Board of Trustees of the Queens Public Library, Secretary of the Board of Trustees of FedCap, and was previously a member of the Mayor's Panel of Educational Policy. She holds a Master's in Special Education from Boston University and a JD from Brooklyn Law School.
I'll second the motion. Are there comments?
Just as the Chairman of the Construction Fund, I would be remiss not to mention the professionalism, the thoroughness, the follow-through, and just the plain wit and initiative that comes from Judy in taking this position, and I wholeheartedly support this. It's, she's the best person for this job.
Other comment? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations, Judy.[1133.83][1133.83](APPLAUSE).
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Milliken, and Executive Vice Chancellor Dobrin for the opportunity to serve the students, faculty, and the staff of the City University. It is both an honor and a privilege. The facilities that we lease, acquire, renovate, and build reflect our commitment to providing safe, state-of-the-art, world-class space for our students and faculty to do their best work. Having the right facilities plays an important role in attracting the best faculty and nurturing talented learners. When we create inspiring spaces, we help prepare our students for a lifetime of rigor and achievement. We remind them of what they deserve and what they can accomplish, and we remind them that we believe in them. We remind the world that CUNY, a public university open to all, is committed to excellence. The impact CUNY has and will continue to have on this city for generations to come is immeasurable. To be part of Chancellor Milliken's team that will shape the future of this university is both exciting and daunting. I look forward to the challenge, and thanks again for the opportunity.[1213.83][1213.83](APPLAUSE).
Former Vice Chancellor Iris Weinsholl is with us here tonight, and we extend a warm welcome to you, Iris. I would now like to ask Trustee Brian Overfell to present a resolution.
Resolution of appreciation for Iris Weinsholl. Whereas Ms. Iris Weinsholl served as Vice Chancellor for Facilities Planning, Construction, and Management from April 2007 to June 2014. Whereas Ms. Weinsholl graduated magna cum laude from Brooklyn College and earned her Master's Degree in Public Administration from New York University's Robert F. Wagner Graduate School of Public Service. And whereas Ms. Weinsholl was named Alumni of the Year by Brooklyn College Alumni Association in 2000, the group's highest honor in recognition of her commitment to the betterment of the community through her many professional and civic achievements. And whereas Ms. Weinsholl oversaw the physical maintenance and operations of the 26 million-square-foot, 300-building CUNY plant through facilities planning and capital programs, planning, negotiating, and implementing capital construction and rehabilitation programs in consultation with a broad range of constituencies, including the Dormitory Authority of New York and the City University Construction Fund, and monitoring, providing technical assistance, and support to the campuses. And whereas Ms. Weinsholl led offices of Facilities Planning, Construction, and Management with exemplary dedication, integrity, and an enduring commitment to the mission of the City University of New York. Therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Ms. Iris Weinsholl for her exemplary dedication and distinguished leadership to the City University of New York.
I'm happy to second the resolution. Can we adopt by acclamation?[1358.51][1358.51](APPLAUSE). I would like to present and move the following resolution, and this concerns the Appointment of the Vice Chancellor and University Chief Information Officer. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of CUNY approved the appointment of Brian T. Cohen as Vice Chancellor and University Chief Information Officer at a salary to be determined by the Chancellor. Brian Cohen has served CUNY with distinction since 2001, first as interim University Chief Information Officer, and subsequently as Associate Vice Chancellor and University Chief Information Officer. Mr. Cohen has developed strategies to implement and upgrade the university's information technology assets to support its administrative and pedagogic goals, support the master plan, and the vision of the Chancellor and college presidents. He is responsible for the implementation and management of the largest enterprise research management project in all of higher education, CUNY First, and he oversees the management and technical teams charged with designing, developing, and supporting the university's vast and complex enterprise technology systems, data centers, and networks. In light of the significant increase in the scope of Mr. Cohen's responsibilities, his position has been reclassified to that of a Vice Chancellor. May I have a second for this motion?
Second.
Are there any comments before we vote? Chancellor Milliken?
Yeah, I would say that when I first came to CUNY, I learned that we were engaged in the largest enterprise system implementation of higher education. I thought, great, this is my third institution, and this is the third time I've been through this.[1499.73][1499.73](LAUGHTER). But in this case, we could not ask for a better leader for this. Brian's experience, well-qualified, understands the fundamental relationship between information systems and the life of the university. And while, as he knows better than anyone, there will never be a time when everyone is satisfied with our systems, he also knows, I hope, how much we value his steady hand at such a critical time. He's most deserving of this appointment as Vice Chancellor. I recommend it enthusiastically.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Brian, do you say?[1538.82][1538.82](APPLAUSE).
One of my biggest fans, Chairman Smith, Chancellor Milliken, the members of the Board, thank you so much for me to be a part of this university and the technological evolution we have gone through these last 13 years. It's been amazing. I couldn't done, I couldn't have done this without Alan Dobrin and his leadership and his support of me, and I am thrilled to be able to continue to do this for the next 13-plus years. So, thank you for your support and your confidence. I greatly appreciate it.[1573.51][1573.51](APPLAUSE).
I would like now to call on Trustee Wellington Chen to present a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution of appreciation for Dr. Julia C. Wrigley. Whereas Dr. Julius Wrigley has served as interim Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost with great distinction since January 2014. And whereas Dr. Wrigley became Associate University Provost in 2009, from 2005 to 2008, she served as Acting Associate Provost at Graduate School and University Center, where she has been a faculty member since 1991. And whereas Dr. Wrigley taught education and sociology at UCLA prior to joining the City University of New York in 1991. Whereas Dr. Wrigley holds an undergraduate degree in sociology from the University of Michigan, and her master's and doctoral degrees in sociology are from University of Wisconsin-Madison. And whereas Dr. Wrigley's work focuses on social class and inequality, she's the Office of Class Politics and Public Schools on conflicts over the control and funding of Chicago schools and other people's children, on relations between middle-class parents and their children's caregivers. And whereas, under Dr. Wrigley's leadership, major academic initiatives were aptly maintained, such as the Pathways Initiative, and the Stella and Charles Gudman Community College, and CUNY School of Public Health, and whereas Dr. Wrigley led the Office of Academic Affairs with exemplary dedication, integrity, and enduring commitment to the educational mission of the City University of New York. Now, therefore be it, resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Dr. Julia C. Wrigley for her exemplary dedication and distinguished leadership to the City University of New York.
I'll second the motion. Are there any comments?
I'd just like to say, it's been a pleasure serving with her under all these years, and it's truly an honor, and she deserves this proclamation.
Let's adopt by acclamation.[1716.23][1716.23](APPLAUSE).
I just want to say thank you. It's been a great pleasure getting a sense of the full academic reach of all of CUNY, all of its sectors, all of its colleges, what an enormously complex and diverse and interesting university, and I think everyone here can be proud of what's being created. Much remains to be done, but it is a great institution.[1746.76][1746.76](APPLAUSE).
There is a reception immediately following this meeting in honor of the new trustees, President Eduardo Marti, Executive Vice Chancellor Julia Wrigley, Presidents David Gomez and Thomas Sekunegbe, and Vice Chancellors Judy Bertram and Brian Cohen. It's being held in Room 14270, which is on this floor, and greeters are waiting to escort you, so you can all say hello to our distinguished new appointments and honorees. There being no further business, I declare this meeting adjourned.